Good evening. I'm going to call this meeting the Gloucester Public Schools School Committee to order. And I'll remind everybody that the mission of Gloucester Public Schools for all students to be successful engage lifelong learners. This meeting is recorded by video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than 25 people. This meeting will be conducted by remote participation. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you're watching on a computer, a device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. With that said, Maria, could we have, uh, this is October 28th. And could we have a roll call vote for attendance?
Ms. Prince.
Here.
You're taken.
Here.
Ms. Watson.
Here.
Ms. Weason.
Here.
Kathy Clancy.
Here.
Mr. Favazza.
Here.
And Chairman Pope.
Here. Okay. There's been, um, a couple of, uh, well, we'll go into oral communications first and oral communications. The public shall have the opportunity at every regular school committee meeting to be heard under oral communications. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to the school committee business to appear before the school committee, state their problem without debate, and the matter may be referred to the proper subcommittee. For items that are on the agenda, members of the public may address the committee with the permission of the chair. Persons speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each and shall submit a copy of the prepared correspondent communication to the recordings secretary. The school committee chair shall have not allow complaints as to individual performance or character. Okay. With that being said, I'm going to open up oral communications. If there's anybody who'd like to speak, raise their hand or press star nine. Okay, I'm not seeing any. So in that case, um, we will move on to, uh, my, uh, I'd like to read this statement. The statement is from, because there's been a number of questions about whether school committee members or administrators or, uh, people employed by the city can advocate for, um, ballot questions. And I have a statement from the city solicitor that I'd like to read for everybody. And, um, there have been questions raised as to whether or not elected or appointed officials may advocate for certain political positions, issues. Given that there is an important issue on the upcoming ballot, I wanted to provide everyone with the ordinance that governs, governs political activity. Please review it and let me know if you have any questions. Thanks. Chip Payson. Section seven dash 11, political activity. Any city officer, member of a multiple member body or city employee may, in his capacity as a private citizen, become involved in the local campaign for the election of a candidate to the city office or campaign in favor or in opposition of any other local issue that may go before the voters of the city or the members of the city council, provided however, that the personal participation by such persons shall not be made while actively engaged in his municipal duties and further that no use whatsoever is made of the facilities or the title or other description by which the city office or multiple member body or city employee which they hold is known. Okay. So just, I hope that clarifies things for people in the community who are questioning whether Samantha can stand out in front of the library and hold a sign that says, advocates for something. So, uh, that being said, we'll move on to the next item, which is, our student advisory committee, uh, recognitions. We'll go to recognition. Sorry. Do we, does anybody have any recognitions? Kathy?
Um, I just wanted to recognize the Gloucester High School administration and staff for a very well organized meet the teacher night. Given that everything was new and very different, I thought it was handled really well.
Any else? Anyone else?
Jonathan, I have my hand up. My video is off.
Okay.
And my video is going to be off all night, by the way. I apologize. So I'll have to use the hand. Um, so I just want to recognize Joanne Cino, city clerk, Joanne Cino, um, and her staff. With this election, it's bringing a lot of voters out and as we know, the vote is very important. Um, and that office, we know is working 24/7, um, trying to get everyone equipped with what they need to vote in different ways that they're voting and things like that. So I just really want to recognize them. I know we all appreciate their work and they deserve a huge shout out.
I would like to second that. I went to vote the other day and it was, um, a very, um, smooth process and very easy to do. And very efficiently run and they're doing a great job down there. Uh, any other recognitions? Okay, then we are joined tonight, um, by our student advisory, uh, committee, Megan Slufel. Would you like to introduce yourself and, and tell us what's going on at Gloucester High School?
Um, hi, I'm Megan Slufel. I'm a senior. Um, I'm vice president of the executive board at Gloucester High. Um, a little stuff that's been going on this week is it was Think Pink Week at GHS. So we're just bringing light to breast cancer awareness. We encouraged everyone, all grades to wear pink. You know, we want to make it as fun and, you know, just bring light to everything for all the kids. Next week, we start our elections, our voting for each grade. Um, we do it. Normally we'd do it in the auditorium, but this year because of COVID-19, our school is just being amazing. We're taking every precaution as we can. So we'll be doing them through meets like this and then students will vote via like a survey type thing. So that's their handling that very well. Also NHS is holding a food drive, um, for the open door. Their goal this year is to get 500 items, which I hope we can accomplish because that's just, that's so amazing. Um, and they're also doing baskets. So it's $30 and it's full of food and everything gets donated to, um, the open door. And then also some for some sports, the field hockey team has been doing really well. They have a couple wins so far. Um, their next game is Thursday, their next home game is Thursday, the fifth. And our captains this year are Ella Marshall, Kelsey Luthers, who's actually the class of 21 present, a class of 2021 president, Mia Sala and Mia Wheeler, who is the president of the executive board.
Thank you. Um, any questions?
Nope.
If, if people want to, um, donate to the food drive, how, how do they go about doing that?
Um, I'm not quite sure how they're going to do it because of COVID, but I know that for students, they are definitely allowing them to come into the library and drop off food. Um, I don't know if, if outside, like outside people can or not, but the students, we ask them to do non-perishable items. We bring it right into the, um, library, it gets sanitized, put in the box, and then at the end of the, um, drive, they'll ship it off to the open door.
And I heard you say something about $30 that if people wanted to donate money.
Yeah, um, I think it's the same thing. I think you either give it downstairs to the, um, front office or you give it to the librarian. I'm not quite sure how that's working because just the whole transaction, you touching it, us touching it. I don't know how that's working. But yes, you can donate. It's $30 and there'll be a basket for the open door.
Okay, great. So I hope, I hope you wish you well. Ben?
Hi, Megan. Susan Lummis, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Thanks for joining us tonight. Um, just a question. I'm going to give us some update on some of the, um, learning that's happening in our schools. So could you just, um, tell us, you know, maybe about a course or a class you're taking? And something you've done recently in your class that was interesting or engaging or have you found worthwhile?
Yeah. So, um, I'm actually in, uh, my English class right now. It's called, um, world literature. And we've been doing really good. And first I would say the teachers are doing an amazing job with the cleaning situation. Like before we even can come in and sit down, like they've cleaned the decks, they'll spray it, wipe it, and then we come in and then we'll rewipe it. So they've been doing great on that aspect. Um, other than that, we have been studying mythology, which I personally think is super cool. I'm kind of a nerd. So, um, and we're reading, we're about to start the Iliad and the Odyssey and all that stuff. And our teacher, you know, mythology is just such a complex, hard like thing to wrap your head around, like all these people, you know, having relations with all these, like it's just a tangled, a big tangled web. And Ms. Perry, who's my English teacher, has just been doing such a great job and taking it so slow and, you know, really, she's been wanting us to understand it. Like for her, it's not about us, you know, just getting the grade, taking the test and getting like, she wants us to learn. She wants us to go slow and really understand the material. And that's what I just love about her.
Great, great. Thank you, Megan. Really, really appreciate hearing about that and hear how it's going in English. And thank you so much.
Okay. Well, and yeah, Joel.
Thank you, Megan. So, uh, I was curious now that students are back in the building. One of the concerns I had was, you know, I'm sure you've seen on society, this pandemic's just added a level of stress that's kind of raised everybody's stress level. And there's very little room for even adults who are supposed to have fully developed brains to behave responsibly and, and deal with other, you know, um, normal life type stress. Since it's always close to people in supermarkets being totally out of control, et cetera, et cetera. And so I was curious how a building full of teenagers who have like the, the normal stresses of being a teenager in high school stacked on top of the pandemic stress, you know, how is that going? From your point of view?
I think personally for me, I mean, I'm the kind of student who where I can't just sit home and do nothing. I can't, and also I'm the kind of student where I would much rather be curled up on my couch reading a book than at a party, even though we're not supposed to be partying. But the school has just been doing it so well because it's so stressful. I mean, I'm a student who works more than one job. I babysit, I'm like, I just have so much going on in my life and the school makes it so, I feel safe. Like they have the one-way hallway, is there sanitation everywhere? They're constantly cleaning, like they are just taking the steps to not only make sure the building's clean, but to show us, to give us like that, all right, like they're, they're doing their job. And that's what I feel is best because if I didn't see, like actually see them cleaning it, I'd be like, I don't know, but to see them, you know, wiping it down, to see them take the second and stop and just do it. It's really reassuring.
Sure. I guess what I'm thinking along the lines of is, for instance, in a supermarket, we have one-way aisles now, right? Certain, again, adults who can't seem to handle being told they can only walk one way down an aisle. And some curious, you know, how the students are responding to one-way hallways.
Um, I definitely think at first it was a little frustrating just because it's like when you're on third floor and you just need to go down a flight and you had to go like around the building. Like in the beginning, it was frustrating, but I think now it's just where we all understand it. Like we all know, like it's, they're just trying to keep us safe. And there is teachers who stand like in the intersections where it like breaks off to say, you know, hey, just remember like this is the one way you can't enter. And I, from what I've seen, everyone's been following it. Everyone's been doing good. Like we all understand, like as much as people like to think, oh, you know, we're just high schoolers, you know, but I think, I think we've been doing really well and that faculty has been doing a great job to encourage it and make sure everyone is following the rules, one ways, masks, everything.
Great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Um, and I, I say this to all the, uh, the student representatives. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. By rights, you are allowed as the representative of the high school, you're allowed to deliberate as well as ask questions on any of the items that come up. So, um, you can't vote, but you can do all the, all the other things that the rest of us can do. So you're welcome to stay. If you have homework, we understand. Okay. Okay, thank you.
I think Kate Bevins took you up on that once in the last five years and everyone stepped and rolled on.
Megan, this is the time when we used to sit down, I used to say, run while you can, run.
Okay. Well, sometimes there are issues that are relevant to the high school and we appreciate the input from the students, believe me. So, okay, we'll move on, um, to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anybody would like to remove for further discussion or? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Agenda. Almost.
Okay. Uh, Maria, can we have a roll call vote?
I'm sorry, was there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Prince.
Yeah.
Mayor Taken.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favazza.
Yes.
And Chairman Pope.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to our deliberations on educational issues and I'll hand it over to Superintendent Lummis.
Thank you, folks. Um, if Maria can give me a host privilege, I can share a presentation. Okay, one second. Okay, let's see if this is going to work. Trying something a little bit different today. Okay, hold on a second here. One second, sorry. Okay. Almost there. All right. Do you see a presentation? Great. Okay. Uh, good evening, folks. So we're going to give an update on a few things tonight. Um, we're actually going to give you an update on learning, at least a little bit of it, because a lot of, a lot of that's happening in our schools. There we go. So as I always remind you, our primary objective this year is a safe return and keeping as many students as possible in in-person school settings to maximize and maximize their learning, address our students' full needs and support community and family needs. Uh, we continue to use the guidance set forth by our local and state public health officials and also the Mass Department of Education, and we continue to work daily with the Gloucester Health Department and their tremendous leadership and staff there. Uh, that includes many things, including follow-up on positive cases that when they're reported, supporting contact tracing, tracking community transmission, and being sure we are following all our health and safety protocols. Uh, one thing I learned from talking to different communities this week is how fortunate we are and in some degree how smart we are here in Gloucester to have a tremendous health department that we can rely on, that we can get good information from and we can learn from. And so I just can't thank them enough, led by Karen Carroll, of course, uh, but supported by the mayor and so many other folks. They are just helping us really know what steps to take. Uh, so tonight's update, we're one about learning. Yes, for the first time, and I think I've gotten here, we're going to focus a little bit on learning tonight. Won't be enough, but it'll be a little bit. Give you a COVID update both in schools and citywide and also help folks understand a little, understand a little bit more about close contacts. We've had a number of questions about those lately. Then, uh, Director of Special Education, Patty Wegman, will provide a special education update. And I'll give you an update on enrollment for the year. So, um, six weeks, folks, we have completed six weeks of in-person learning in K to eight and pre-K through eight. At the high school, of course, it's been six weeks of learning, three and a half of those were in remote. And then for the last two and a half weeks, uh, in person, uh, and in person and hybrid. And what that means is we are doing a lot more, especially our approach. Um, other districts, plenty of the districts are hybrid, uh, but typically for the most part that is two days on and three days off. As you know, um, our, uh, eighth, uh, sixth grade through 12th grade is in school four days a week for part, uh, much of the day. And then of course, um, K through six, K through five is in five days a week. There are many districts who have just started their, their hybrid, their in-person part of their hybrid. And there's still many other districts who are fully remote. So I, this is a little bit of gloating, a little bit of puffing our chests out, but we really do have a lot to be proud of because of the work of our teachers, our school leaders, our administrative leaders, obviously the school committee. And then, as I mentioned before, um, other city departments, Department of Public Works, the mayor's office, and certainly the Department of Health, but we really, uh, six weeks of in-person learning, I don't think many people knew or felt we could do that. I don't know if any of us were sure we could do that and things start, are looking good again. So I'll, I'll share that later as we get to a COVID update. I do want to highlight a little, a few things here. What's going on here? Um, I'll start with just a couple of schools. I'm going to highlight a couple of schools and the work they're doing. But that is, that is, um, we will share the wealth as you guys who go along through, through these days and weeks. Because of course, there's great, great learning happening in our schools. At B Man, I'll just give you a quick rundown. There are a couple of photos for you to see there. At kindergarten, appropriately, they're working on colors and shapes. Uh, grade were, grade one, they're learning about nouns and adjectives by writing spooky sentences, which is appropriate for this time of year. Uh, what's nice about that is they're learning by writing, learning about parts of speech while they're learning, uh, improving their writing. Grade two, um, one of, one of many things they're doing is working on math. And this is three to six digit numbers, um, and play, and focusing on place value and always connecting it to what matters to kids. So they're working on place value, um, through hands-on projects related to pumpkins. Also appropriate for this time of year. Um, grade three is also working on their writing with descriptive paragraphs about themselves. And then, uh, grade four, um, and again, not, not touching every grade here, but I can promise you lots, lots of learning happening at every grade in every school. The grade four, they're strengthening their writing by focusing on improving use of detail in their personal narrative, narrative writing pieces. So a little bit of focus on writing there. Of course, that's one of the fundamental pieces of learning and communicating. I was a writing teacher, so I think that's another reason I focus on it. At Plum Cove, I'll pass this over to Greg Bach if he is on the line. Greg, are you there? If not, I can, yeah. Greg's going to tell us about, um, some of the work, both at Plum Cove and also at the Remote Learning Academy in elementary.
Yeah, uh, thank you. Um, I can tell you a little bit about Plum Cove. I'm afraid that, um, given what's been going on, uh, over the last few weeks, I have not been out in schools the way I would like to or as in touch as I would like to be, uh, with all that's going on. But, uh, I can tell you that, um, they, uh, one of the big things that happens every fall is our benchmark assessments, our DIBELS, um, our, uh, we did switch to a new assessment, uh, STAR 360 assessment for both math and literacy. Uh, that was implemented just this fall with training in September and, uh, full rollout. And we've already, uh, completed uh, all of those, uh, those assessments with STAR 360 as well as DIBELS. I believe is just about finished. Um, in, in math as well, ENI and other assessments are underway. And I, I just have to say that, um, everybody's working incredibly hard. Right in this particular initiative, the math and literacy coaches have been leading the, uh, new assessment implementation as well as doing a lot of the assessments themselves. And for the remote academy, uh, around 220 students, uh, the coaches split up and individually, um, did the assessments for students in, in Zoom breakout rooms. So this is all, this is all something that we wondered, you know, if we would be able to do all of these kinds of things and do them both in person and remotely. And I, I have to hand it to them. They, they researched, figured out how to do it and, um, have done it. And it was a lot of, a lot of work. Um, and so we should be able to, uh, pull together those, uh, assessment, that assessment data very soon and begin developing the small groups for interventions, which would have happened, uh, before, before this time in a regular year. But we're still doing well and that's, um, going to be essential information for helping us understand more about, um, any potential learning gaps that, uh, exist or loss, learning loss, uh, from the spring. And, uh, to, to target the interventions to address those needs. So a lot of work has gone into that, uh, both in person and in the remote academy. Um, in remote academy, K through five, uh, this week, we just actually, I just came from the main office and I have to shout out to, to Heather Goolsbee, one of our education support professionals who, uh, was there till almost six o'clock tonight, handing out science, math and literacy materials to grades K through five, Kristen Parsons, Gina Donovan, Melissa Francis, who are also spent much of their day today. Uh, we do have, uh, a few that weren't picked up, so hopefully we'll do another round tomorrow and, and get those sent home. Uh, but those are, those are kits that, um, coaches spend a lot of time, you know, putting together an individual packets to support learning at home with math, manipulatives, uh, foundations, home kits, which are mini foundations, phonics boards that they typically we use in school. Every student now has one, uh, to, to use remotely as well as science materials to support, uh, when upcoming, uh, Wednesday enrichment, uh, activities. Teachers at, in the remote academy have continued, uh, to stay in, in contact with the homeschool staff, including the principal, the special education staff, adjustment counselors to, um, help support all of the needs to continue to do things like child study, uh, to take a look at, um, you know, particular needs that students may have and how we can support them with, uh, a variety of services. Um, and to focus on, on attendance issues, but also really to find out from, um, a, a number of different staff members, how we can support, um, families at home, either with Wi-Fi hotspots, uh, technology, um, additional tutoring. Uh, we have tutoring programs going on in person and remotely for any student who might be an English learner, a special education student or regular ed who just needs a little extra support. And that came through the Desi Cares Act that we have some funding for that. So there's just a lot going on, a lot of supports in place. And, and many people are really working hard to integrate those and, and provide a lot of support for our kids. Just a final note, uh, remote academy is a little bit behind the, um, in-person schools on the parent conferences, primarily due to the class sizes. And so parent conferences are this week, starting, uh, tomorrow afternoon and next week. Uh, so we should be finished up with benchmark assessments and conferences by, by next week.
Great. Thank you, Greg. Um, just want to highlight a couple of those things. Like Greg said, the parent conferences happening in our schools, including Remote Learning Academy. And, um, and also the benchmark assessments, you know, two examples of how in many ways we are starting to operate as normal. Um, nothing will be normal this year, of course, but those are a couple of indicators of things are operating, uh, and as, as we hope, as we intend. One last thing about the benchmark assessments that are crucial is in the springtime, uh, so many of us in education, no matter where we were, um, we're very concerned at that point of, you know, what are kids losing in terms of, of learning or not progressing, that sort of stuff. And when will we know and how will we know? And so I'm really, really glad and really proud of our, of our crew in Gloucester here who's been, who has done those at this point because they're really essential in knowing where our students are now in literacy and math. Um, but also how do we support them in going forward and what do they need help on and what are they strong at? What are they good at? Um, and how do we organize them to work in small groups and other ways to keep on supporting them from where they are? Um, and that data, that those, the understanding where the kids are now will not only help us in the short term, but also help us understand the progress, the progress they make for the whole year, regardless of, um, what, what learning model they're in or what learning model we are in. So, it's a really, those are really important steps we're taking, um, all across our schools. Um, I want to make sure everyone knew about it. Let's go on to, uh, O'Malley here a little bit. Uh, just the seventh grade team, for example, so both in school, so the, their first bullet here is the in-school crew. Um, they completed their bottle rocket projects, um, and just be, and they launched them outside. Just to be clear, that's using water propulsion. No flammable liquids, just in case anyone was concerned out there. That's one sort of, um, you know, the benchmark, or I should say sort of, um, traditional product they do every year in seventh grade. And then the remote team, um, for seventh grade, or they're completing in their first, um, sort of project-based work, which is sort of project-based work, which is combined English and social studies. It's a product based on looking into careers. They've researched, each individual research is a career and tries to learn about what the path is towards being successful in that career. And some of the ones they've been, they've been, kids have selected their guidance counselor, dentist, plastic surgeon, professional hockey player and chef. They're actually doing a remote expo tomorrow of their projects that I believe parents and, parents and others are invited to view, I believe. So they're not only doing some great work led by their, their remote team of teachers, but also going to be presenting it to others as well. So just another example of some of the great works happening in our schools. And again, these are just small snippets, but wanted to take a moment to sort of center ourselves there. That is why we've been doing so much work in so many ways to help folks, help our students, and just wanted to focus on that for a little bit. So from there, we'll move into our COVID update. So we're looking at a few things here, citywide data, and the significant progress cities making, the status of cases in the schools to date. We'll remind folks again, look at school-based transmission. We'll take a little closer look at close contacts, and then also the map. We'll look at the map a little earlier and talk about the statewide map, which gets a lot of attention these days. So first of all, as, as we said from the beginning, community transmission is the key metric. I would add, school transmission is also a key metric too. But based on the guidance that we've been doing from Health Department, we continue to look at closely at the community rate of community transmission. Also the positivity rate of, of tests. And this is the data we shared with you last week and, and all the data that goes into those different pieces. Really important progress from the, from this, from the city, and it's because the city, our families, residents have done an excellent job over the last two-plus weeks in taking care of each other, taking care of themselves, limiting, to limit the spread, and therefore help themselves get better, but help the community get better. It's reported today that citywide cases are down to just 19 after a week ago being at 65. That me, that is just an incredible progress. It means that the spread has been, has been rapidly contained. These are my words, not anyone else's. And, and really just is a testament to the sort of all-hands-on-deck approach for the mayor's office, the Department of Health, all sorts of services, the testing that was brought in here to help people understand where they were. And then also from families, in terms of the schools, I'll show you what's been happening in the schools, but really families helping to take care of the schools by quarantining any family members who are in our schools who are close contacts and thereby keeping them safe themselves, but also keeping our school community safe too. So that's just really great progress that the whole city should take credit for and be proud of. It does mean, because this map is sort of, it lags, the, the data lags. So last week, October 22nd, this map is now being released by the state on Thursdays. Because they are also adding in more information to, to point out where or when a community's color or, you know, status is based on specific clusters or sources, cases from a specific source. So you can see that Gloucester isn't red for the first time. Some of the communities are still gray, but other communities along, among the state are also inching up as well. We will continue to look at Gloucester and our specific cases here. Really, really important. I communicated this to staff and to families last week that the Department-
I hate to interrupt you, we're only 19 cases. I'm so excited. Only 19 cases. We're in front 79, 32, and now only. I hate the word only, but what we have been, 19 cases, everyone. Great, great, great social distance and wear your mask at schools. Thank you.
Yep, it's a great job. It really is, Mayor. Thanks for pointing that out again. It is really remarkable work by this city. It's just, it is a story that people should know about. So in terms of the map, the Department of Health and DESI are insisting, insisting that communities do not act on just one week of data on that map. It's too sensitive. It doesn't give a clear enough indication of what's happening in, in the schools or in the community. DESI is also telling us very clearly, using three weeks of, of that map, of that data, and also looking at transmission within our schools, within a school or, or, or schools. And that the decision to move from one learning model to another needs to be made in conjunction with the local board of health. We continue to do that. We're looking at that as I, as I communicate to staff and families last week, and this week, there is no need to change from our learning model and the success we're having. Moving on, I want to now get into our information here. And then I'll pause to see if there are any questions. So the total positive cases since we began school is 19. Seventeen of those cases have been resolved, meaning the students have been, are back in school after going through the quarantine period and getting better if they had any symptoms. And two are still active. I mean, two, two of those cases are, folks were out of school. This week since Saturday, there have been no cases in the schools reported at all, no, no positive cases. Very importantly, just as a reminder, only one case of those 19 has resulted in more than, more than five close contacts. That is from the great work of our distancing and keeping mindful of that distance and how we work with students and staff. All the recent cases, the ones, you know, over the past 10 days or so, have had only, have had no close contacts or just one close contact, and that's because those families were already quarantining and keeping, keeping themselves or people out of school, out of school, out of the school buildings. So not, so they didn't result in any close contacts. And then just, this is the same I reported last week, it's still true. There has been no transmission within the schools. No positive cases within the school community have led to other positive cases. We even believe at this point, and I think I have this accurate, but even we've done a really good job, our nurses, this is, and our staff of if someone has symptoms, you know, on the, on the COVID list, that could be a cough, that could be a headache, that could be a stuffy nose, or a combination of those. Of course, as you know, our protocols require that that person leave school or doesn't report to school, and then they get checked out by a doctor and/or get a test. None of those folks, and those symptoms, folks who have had symptoms in our schools have turned out to be positive cases either. Essentially, all these cases have been, have been started from outside the school system. And when they've had them, the 19 cases, none of them have led to new cases in our schools. That's really showing us that there's no transmission with our, within our schools, which is a really big deal. And helps us understand, although the community's in red for the moment, that it's not really impacting the schools in a negative way. That's just very, very important information. Let me pause there and then see if folks have questions. I'm going to go into more detail in terms of close contacts in a moment and talk more about those and clarify a number of things related to close contacts.
Laura.
Thank you, and thank you for all of this. I think six weeks is, is an amazing accomplishment, so thank you to all the teachers and staff. Just wanted to ask, looking forward, how we're looking at holiday times and how we're going to be advising both the community and our schools around, you know, Thanksgiving and, you know, upcoming holidays. So just wondering if there's some, some protocols on that.
Sure, there are protocols yet. Well, I'll continue to consult with other superintendents and see what they're doing, and also Department of Education. I don't anticipate any reason or any need to close, some folks are considering closing schools between Thanksgiving and the December holiday. I need to look further into this. I certainly hope we don't. We'll advise folks not to travel and we'll advise them what to do if they do travel. But I, I wouldn't want to close the schools down because a small percentage of folks may be traveling. I think a lot, fewer folks will be traveling this year. I hope that's the case. That's what would be safe, but that still is just current thinking. I need to look more into it through, you know, DESI and other superintendents, and then also we'll, we'll come back to you as well if there needs to be any change in the school calendar, but at this point, we don't, I don't anticipate that there would be.
Thank you.
Sure. Other questions before we go on?
The questions, I can't see everybody, so.
I can see folks. I can, if I can, I'll tell you, Jonathan, if folks, what it looks like, okay for now. Great.
Don't see any.
Okay. So I do want to dive into close contacts a little bit more tonight because folks have had questions and there have been some changes as well. So one thing that's clear, and I want to just remind folks and just reiterate and help, and help folks understand is that both our nurses ask folks who may be close contacts, but also the Department of Health staff really takes us over as well. And they ask many questions to get down the facts of what a person was experiencing, what symptoms they may have had, when, who they were with, in school, outside of school. So I, I do want folks to understand that, that the Department of Health, all of whom have had a lot of experience with this at this point, really do dig and figure out whether or not a person may be a close contact of someone who, who had a positive test. To be considered a close contact, a person has to fit a few criteria here. One, they have to come into direct contact with the individual who tested positive. And this is really the point. Sometimes folks ask about, well, I'm a close contact or someone who's been identified as a close contact. That's okay, but that doesn't mean that you're actually a close contact. I, I mean, let me rephrase that. I've been near someone who's a close contact, that someone who tests positive. Okay, but that does not make, make that person a close contact. If they weren't in proximity of a person who tested positive, it, you can't be a close contact. So this notion of I'm a close contact, I have a close contact, it doesn't, doesn't, the chain doesn't keep on going. It's broken at the point of when, whether or not you were near someone who was tested positive. So that's the first piece. The next piece is you have to had, have to have had contact with the individual who tested positive in a certain timeframe. The timeframe that CDC, DPH, and Gloucester Department of Health continue to operate on is you had to be close, a close contact with someone who tested positive in the time, in the 48 hours before they tested positive, or the 48 hours before the person who tested positive started having symptoms. Okay, sometimes this is called the infectious period. Okay, so it may be that they tested positive and usually go, you know, go 48 hours prior to that, especially if they're asymptomatic. But also often folks find out, the Department of Health finds out that, that before someone tested positive, they had symptoms. And they may have had symptoms two days before or three days before. When we're finding out about close contacts, we find out who was near that person for the 40 hours before they started having symptoms, even if they're, even if their test came later. And then the last piece is, must be within six feet for 15 minutes or more during the course of a day. A single day when the person, while the person who, who, who tested positive. This has asterisk next, next, next to it because it's changed. I'll go in, in, in a moment about that change because it's, it's important one and one that will impact our schools or impact, is impacting contact tracing. So let me talk about this a little more in depth. So 15 minutes during a single day and the 48 hours before the person tested positive, or the 48 hours before the positive person started experiencing symptoms. So what does that, what does that mean? First of all, it's very important for the community to know that the Department of Health has been operating by this definition for, you know, more than two weeks. So since before that spike we've had here, that we had in Gloucester. So while our communication in, it hasn't, hasn't, had not changed in terms of what we were explaining to people, the work that the nurses, but especially the Department of Health were doing had already changed. And as they talked to people, as they asked people about being in close contact, whether they were near someone who tested positive, this is what they were going on. I mentioned that they ask, you know, multiple significant interactions. So they're looking for multiple significant interactions with the person who tested positive. What I mean by that is, so it isn't just, you know, walking by someone 15 times, that sort of thing. All right, I'll give you some examples to, to explain this. So a, a person, in this case, a staff member is meeting with a colleague three different times during the school day and sitting within six feet each, each time. Okay, that person would definitely be a close contact. Okay, two things. One, they're within six feet, but also, and they've had significant time with that person three different times during the school day. So even if that was just five minutes each time, you're, they're at the limit, they're at the threshold, they were within six feet. That, that staff member would be a close contact of, of, of a colleague who tested positive. But another example to help understand this is a staff member works with a student twice during a day while sitting closer than six feet. One time was for 10 minutes and the other time was for 10 minutes. Okay? If that student was, became positive and had a positive test, then the staff member would be a close contact. Or vice versa. If a staff member tested positive, that student would be a close contact. Okay? And, but however, if someone walks by someone 10 or 20 times, I mean, just walks by, doesn't stop and work with a person for a few minutes or five minutes, that sort of thing. If just, just passing by someone in a hallway, even in a classroom, that person would not be considered a, a close contact if, if that, if the other person tested positive. Here's another example of not a close contact. These, these are getting a little more, a little more elaborate. The word problems are getting more, a little more sophisticated. So, but, so we'll walk through this. On Thursday, for example, a student tests positive and had no symptoms. They've been out of school since the previous Friday. So they weren't in school on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. In this example, and this has happened a number of times recently here, there are no, no close contacts in the school. Since the student was not in school for, for the 48 hours prior to the, to the Thursday test and has had no symptoms. Okay? So, and this is something that's happened because our families were proactive in quarantining their, their children because those children may have been in close contacts. If that child then had a positive test, but we're, we're out for five, six days before that, there's no risk to folks in the school, okay? Because the child was not in close contact with them for the 48 hours prior to having a positive test, and they never had any symptoms. That's a hard thing for folks to communicate, for hard things for our people to understand. We'll continue to try to work with it. We've continued to work with our staff and our families to understand that sort of level of detail. But this is a place where there's been quite a bit of confusion and concern. Someone may have found out that a student is positive. They know it's their student, but they don't, they aren't aware of the timing. So we'll have to keep on looking at what we can share with folks while protecting privacy, but also want to help understand, people understand that, that this has, this especially has been, has been a recent occurrence. And then the last example, then I'll pause for questions, is this person, this example is an example of a close contact. On Friday, a student tests positive. They've not been in the building Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday. But the contact tracing team in, in talking with them and talking with their family understands that they had symptoms at home on Tuesday. They weren't in the school, but they, they had symptoms on Tuesday, and they were in school on Monday. So remember, it's 48 hours before they have symptoms. So they would have to look at Sunday, but also in this case, Monday at school to see who the kids, the child's close contacts were. Okay? And again, if at that point, the child had any contact with another student or another staff member for 15 minutes or more within six feet, then those people would be close contacts, even though the test happened much later in the week. So these are meant to help and illustrate examples and, and be informative. Let's see if that worked, and let's see if folks have any questions or clarifications. Okay, seeing none. Either I've baffled folks completely. Good. Thanks for the thumbs up, Joel. Hope that's helpful. Let me move to the next slide. So now what's really important to understand here is that prevention and follow-up are really important with close contacts, and I would say that our combination of safety protocols to limit these types of interactions, and they have been limiting this type of interaction, so. I think probably the most important one, folks have been doing really well, is not coming to school if you're sick or have symptoms. That's certainly helped over the past two, two-plus weeks. The mask wearing is helping, the physical distancing is helping. We don't always have physical distancing. We know that because we're trying to prioritize having kids in school. But for the most part, there are very few folks who are within six feet of, of many other people. They might be within six feet of another person or three or four other people, but not on a regular basis and not, I should say, not more than that. So we're limiting the number of people that anyone is, is within six feet of as much as we possibly can. This is includes, and the Commissioner of Education has talked quite about, about this, especially with staff. And that's an area, not so much in Gloucester, but in other places, where folks have, had meetings or lunch or, or even professional development, and because they're with other colleagues or because they're with other staff members, maybe they let their guard down. We've been doing very well on this recently, but that's, that's another area just to be conscious of. That also could happen during service or support when you're working closely with a few students, and then hand hygiene as well. Those, all those things working in combination, I, I, I would say have helped us minimize our close contacts. And then the last piece, which is really important, is, and this goes to the level of depth and the ongoing nature of how the Department of Health supports families, individuals who are either positive or have, or are identified as close contacts. If I didn't know as much as I know about this, I would, I would easily think that the Department of Health talks to a person one time, finds out they're positive or a close contact, and then leaves them on their own. That's how I always would expect this to work, but that's actually the opposite of what happens. The Department of Health nurses and others continue to be in contact with anybody in the community who has a positive test. And they also continue to be in contact with those who have, who have been identified as close contacts. Um, calling them, having them report temperatures, having them report any symptoms. Um, so they, um, making sure those, those families or individuals know how long they've got to self-isolate or quarantine for. So it's an ongoing work, um, by the Department of Health to keep our, our residents, our community members knowledgeable of, aware of, um, knowing what to do and, and when to do it. I just want to make sure people understand that, um, so they know that, uh, there's really a significant level of depth and follow-through and connection that the Department of Health is really work, works on and has been working on um, all through the summer into the fall, uh, whenever they're a positive case or a close contact.
Samantha has a question?
Yep.
Thank you. This is very helpful. I appreciate all this information. I'm curious about the kids who are experiencing symptoms as kids do with coughs, rainy noses, who, you know, don't come to school, but either through a doctor, um, or a test are deemed okay to be back at school. Are they able to come back even if they still are experiencing those symptoms?
Great question. No, they should not come back. They should not come back. Um, and the doctor should not clear them to come back. Until, uh, they, they, and I mean, I'm not a medical professional, but what I, I, we're expecting doctors to say is, you know, don't come back till these symptoms are resolved and, um, and that sort of thing. And typically it's, um, you know, twenty-four hours, that sort of thing after symptoms are resolved. Um, and, uh, and also, and/or with that test, um, that sort of thing. But, but it's not just, uh, come back with symptoms. We, if you are, have those sorts of, um, symptoms, we want you to stay out.
Now, just one follow-up question. Are, are we doing anything different for kids who have sort of underlying respiratory issues like asthma?
Oh, um, so I should, I should, I should add on to that. The doctor also may di- diagnose or clear the student or staff member because they have ongoing allergies or ongoing asthma, that sort of thing. So you wouldn't have to wait till asthma was, was resolved.
Okay.
As long as they, they know of identified a cause for that.
Yeah, that's, that's sort of what I was getting at because I know of a lot of kids that, you know, are experiencing just sort of baseline issues. Um, and I would hate for them to have to miss school.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you.
Uh, anyone else?
Go ahead.
So just, I think the last piece here is code testing opportunities. Um, so there are three different areas we're working on here. Two are quite promising and one not so sure yet. Um, so we mentioned last week, the DESI, I think it was last week, two weeks ago, maybe. Um, the DESI Rapid Response Mobile Testing and showed you what the thresholds would be to, to engage that. That's provided by the state when schools or districts reach defined thresholds of positive cases. That's for students and staff. Um, that's really responding, responding to upticks. Another program we're working on actively right now and, and will bring to Gloucester is this Rutgers University Concentric Partnership. Um, it's a one-time, it's, it's free of charge. It's one-time opportunity to test staff. Um, we think at this point, the best use would be if, if, uh, the test, if the school community transmission's going up or, uh, maybe as a, as a, help us return after closure. Um, what it is, it's a, it's a PCR test, which is the higher standard test. It's a saliva test as opposed to the swab, um, into the nose and through the brain. Um, and, uh, uh, but it's, 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 um, we would, uh, administer it or itself administer, I should say, in the schools, um, for, for staff. But then it was, the results are shipped off and processed and, um, then communicated by the group down at Rutgers. Um, what we're putting in place is we're putting in place, um, the ability to move forward quickly with this by having those test kits on site. Um, if you don't have the test kits on site, it's a one or maybe two-week delay to get everything here and be able to administer it. If you, um, set things up ahead of time and have those test kits here, then you can do it quickly when you need it. That sort of thing. Um, that's a one-time opportunity. It's free. Um, we could potentially pay for more of those if you wanted to. Um, but, uh, and so that's, that's something that was available to us or we, I think, learned about through the Department of Health. The last one is, is the newest one, and this just really came out, I believe it was la- late last week, yeah, late last week. Um, and this is from Abbott Labs called Binax. It's, um, through DESI and Mass Department of Health. Uh, uh, Binax is providing two million antigen tests across Massachusetts to like, you know, kindergarten through, you know, college universities. Um, and, uh, as we learn more about this, there was a webinar today, we learned more about it. It does seem like, um, they're trying, they're using, um, they're, they're, they're working with Massachusetts to test their test, to test the effectiveness of their test, to have it used widely. Um, not to prove concept because it's, it's, it's quite accurate at this point, as, as they report. Um, uh, but whereas the Rutgers University Concentric does all the, um, uh, analysis, all the reporting, all the communication, uh, all the follow-up, uh, a lot of that would fall on our staff, um, internally here. Um, so again, we're still looking at that, still learning about it. Um, it's the antigen test, so it isn't, um, it isn't the PCR test. Um, and it's a test that would still require follow-up tests to confirm, um, positives. Um, so, uh, that's a possibility still, but again, we're just, just announced this past week, so we're looking more into it. Um, but that's where we are presently on, um, on, uh, possible testing or avenues towards testing. Is that a question, Sam? Your hands up, the hands raised. The, the mechanical handy. Okay, great.
I'm all set. Thank you.
And just as a reminder, so this is about the mobile testing from DESI. You know, we have two active cases among all our staff and students right now. Um, which I do, and I, these are their thresholds. I just want to, and that's across the whole district, right? All of our schools. Uh, just to remind people that we're not, we're not nowhere near at this point, the thresholds for, um, for DESI's mobile, uh, testing unit. We'd have to have two or more individuals, you know, in a classroom, um, as opposed to the entire district. We have to have three individuals in a grade at the elementary or six individuals, um, in each grade of the middle school, you know, or nine students at, at, at a specific school. So considering we only have two active cases among all our staff and students across, across the district, we're nowhere near that threshold at this point, which is, which is fantastic news. We don't, we don't want to be, be near that threshold. So um, so that's all for that update about how things are going, both on, a little bit on learning, a little bit, little bit, a lot more than usual, but a little bit more. Um, and then also on, uh, a sort of update on COVID and how, and how we're doing, which of course is very well. Any questions before moving on to special education? Nope. Okay, thanks. So I'll call upon Patty Wegman to, um, give us an update. So you, in your packet, uh, we provide a memo which has some similar information basically, but Patty wants to present, uh, we would like Patty to present it to you publicly. Patty, ready when you are?
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Chairman Pope and members of the school committee for giving me your time this evening. Um, I just want to start out, I know that, uh, Mr. Bach gave kudos to our Remote Learning Academy, and I would like to say that, um, while my first slide is not about the Remote Learning Academy, I do want to just call attention to the fact that we have a number of hardworking general education staff, special education staff, and paraprofessionals that are really devoting a lot of their time to making sure that that experience is, is really engaging and, um, and a, a great learning experience for students. And I do want to, again, just call out to Heather Goolsbee, who has really been a delight in just, um, doing the best she can to help out the teachers and other staff in delivering things to people's homes. I mean, she gives up her own time to do this and I, I just want to call her out and give her some rec- special recognition. So, um, thank you. Um, so right on the delightful day of March thirteenth, we received the DESI's final report of our tiered focus monitoring. And for those of you who have been on the, um, school committee for a number of years, we used to call that the coordinated program review. Um, now it's called the tiered focus monitoring. Um, I did discuss that last year where we're now no longer doing an every-three-year and six-year review of our, um, compliance with regulatory requirements and special ed and civil rights. It's now, um, a yearly, um, sort of, uh, review of certain criterion. Um, this year we did quite well. Um, all of our civil rights criterion in the universal standards were found in compliance. Um, we did have two criterion in special education that we needed to, to rectify, which have, have been done. Um, some of the things that they looked at this past year were, um, in civil rights and special education surrounded the issues regarding licensure and professional development. Um, we looked at parent and student community engagement, facilities and classrooms, time on learning and equal access for students. Um, the two things that, uh, we did need to rectify had to do with, um, making sure that we had classrooms, special needs classrooms integrated within the life of the building. So that has been rectified at the middle school and the high school. Um, and then we did have a minor licensure issue that has since been rectified. So, um, we do expect that the Department of Education will be doing an onsite visit this next year at some point, um, to take a look at the classrooms and make sure that the, um, the citations regarding the locations of classrooms have been rectified. So we're now in the directed improvement tier, which is a good place for us to be in. Um, that means that they'll have less oversight, but that they will expect us to be providing, um, uh, regular, um, progress reports, um, as they schedule with each of the districts. Next slide. Um, yes, last year we were cited for having a disproportionality in special education. We had, um, a percentage of students, uh, Hispanic students being identified with students as having a special need. Um, as a result of that, um, identification, we needed to use a portion of our, um, two-forty grant, our IDEA grant to, um, sort of work with our staff in, um, areas of professional development, um, to, um, work with teachers to address the unique needs of not only, um, English language learners, but English language learners with students that potentially might have a disability. So we're looking to partner with, um, a collaborative program to help us implement some professional development in, of instruction to enhance our inclusive classrooms to, um, meet the unique needs of those English language learners prior to identifying those students with special needs. Um, this year, at this time, we do have sixty-three students in out-of-district placements. Seven of those students are school choice students. Um, and as you know, students that are, have choiced out to another district who have subsequently been placed in an out-of-district placement, the originating district needs to pick up that tuition. So of the choice students, two of those students were, uh, unilateral placements to another school. Um, we also have one new move-in, um, who is retaining their choice status um, in their district and is outplaced. And that's just a, a minor detail, but what that means is a student from a, a neighboring, um, district moved back into Gloucester. They would like to retain their choice status, so we will be billed through the special needs increment, um, as a choice student to pay for that tuition. Um, we did bring one back, a student back from, um, an out-of-district placement to the anchor program, and I think you've heard that before. Um, our anchor program at the high school is a program that supports students with social emotional needs. And I can't stress enough how much we need to continue to support that program because they have been the receiving program of many students that at the high school age want to come back to their home, um, district and play sports and graduate with their peers in their neighborhood, um, and have that high school experience. So I just want to again say kudos to the anchor program staff because they have done a great deal of work to support our students coming from, um, out-of-district programs. Um, back to that slide, Ben, just sort of a little bonus for us. We do have six out-of-district students graduating this next year. A lot of them were, um, very high tuition students, and that will be, uh, district savings of over a million dollars in tuition, um, for those out-of-district placements. Um, our preschool numbers, um, so, um, the preschool this year has started the, has started the year with six in-person classrooms. Three of those classrooms are integrated classrooms, and what that means is they have a, um, a mix of students with special needs, meaning students on IEPs and students that are peers that tuition into those programs. Two programs are substantially separate programs, which means those are very high-needs students that need intensive support. And one of those programs is an integrated sub, is a hybrid-integrated sub-separate program, which means part of the day those students are just students on IEPs, and then we integrate peers in the afternoon with those students. Um, because of the need for social distancing and keeping the cohorts together, instead of doing the half-day morning and afternoon, this year the students attend four days. Um, two days a week, the peers attend, and two days a week, just the students with special needs. I'm sorry, four days a week, the special needs students attend, and two days a week, the peers attend. Um, we did open up a new classroom about a week and a half ago. I had the opportunity to go in and give a lunch break last week with some of those kids. Um, and that is a classroom for students. Again, it will be an integrated classroom um, that will receive the students that, um, are under assessment and potentially be identified as, um, needing special services. Um, so we're ready to receive those new students as well. We do have a remote learning classroom for students, um, in the, in the preschool. Um, we have nine students in that particular remote learning environment. Um, I know that one of the school committee members had a question about some students that were receiving just related services. Um, so students that are in the remote learning classroom are students that also have a classroom functioning goal. So they're part of a classroom for the portion of their whole day. Students that receive related services just check in with a physical therapist, a speech and language therapist, or an occupational therapist, just for those therapy services only. They're not part of the remote learning classroom. We do have a number of referrals in the preschool this year. Right now, we're currently have seventeen referrals in process. So we'll, we will probably fill up a number of those classrooms pretty quickly this fall. Um, in the remote academy, we do have, as, uh, Mr. Bach had said, over two-hundred-and-twenty students in the K through five remote academy. Forty-six of those students have individual education plans. We were fortunate enough to, um, uh, have two-point-five special needs teachers work in that particular, um, environment with students. Um, we also have, it's, right now, we had three paraprofessionals at the time of this writing. I believe we've added a fourth um, to work with students in the remote environment. Um, students that receive related therapies also receive those therapies from their homeschool related service providers. Um, and again, I, I can't tell you enough about how, um, how hard working the staff in that remote academy are. And even with the numbers of students in that classroom, the, the general education teachers are really sensitive to each and every student and the needs of the, the students with IEPs and, and their services. So again, kudos to them. Um, homeschool students, uh, we have fifty-seven families that are homeschooling these, their children this, this fall. Um, that number continues to grow. I'm getting, um, applications every week. Um, we do have families that are moving into Gloucester that are homeschool families. Um, so it's not just families that are opting out of their remote environment or their in-person environment. This is an increase of nineteen new families, um, from last year, which accounts for sixty new students being homeschooled. Um, and as I said, we are continuing to receive homeschool requests. Any?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Melissa, go ahead.
Um, regarding the homeschool students, when, when the parents apply for Regarding the homeschool students, when when the parents apply for being homeschooled, are their children tested to determine if there's any special need requirement?
No, there are not. And that's actually something that if you read the homeschool education laws, we can the district themselves is not able to do unless a parent requests, we cannot ask to do a private assessment of a student prior to homeschooling.
What if they ask for services? Do they have to be involved in the school system to get the services?
Nope, absolutely. Homeschool students are actually able to receive the same types of availability of assessment and services as a student placed at a private school within our district lines. So homeschooling is considered a private placement, so it would be considered as though they were a student at Faith Christian. If they want an assessment, we would have to do it. If they required services, we would need to provide those services.
Okay, thank you. And while I have you, I just want to say thank you for your hard work in this department. I remember years ago when our first audit, there was a lot of things revealed, and we've come a long way, and I just want to commend you for all the hard work that's going on in your department. It was good to see the report.
Thank you, Melissa.
Joel?
Thank you. Patty, I know I've asked you some of this question before, and it's kind of important to to repeat when discussed these financial impact. And you know, whether Superintendent Lemus wants to jump in on some of this also, I'll leave it to the two of you. But I just kind of want to walk through hypothetical. So let's say I live in Gloucester, and let's say I have a child who choices into Manchester Essex. So right off the top, Superintendent Lemus, the chapter seventy funding allocated to my child follows my child. Gloucester does not receive it from my child. Manchester Essex District receives my child's chapter seventy funding allocated to that student, correct? Okay, let's say I'm over at he's over at Manchester Essex, and it's determined they cannot service my child's IEP, and that they're going to have to send my child out of district to go get services elsewhere. But Gloucester happens to have the facilities necessary to service my child's IEP. And I know I've asked this question before, but I want to have it out there. Does Gloucester, you know, get the the first crack at providing the services? Is there any ability to say, you know, you have to come back to your home district before you can go out of the Manchester Essex District seeking services?
Sure, Joel, I'll answer that question. So backing up, a lot of times, parents leave the district because they're they choose to want to be part of another community, or there has been some sort of breakdown within their homeschool. We are always invited to the table anytime there's a decision made to place a student in another program from a choice district. We always offer our program. But in the end, the parent has to agree. They have to agree to that placement back in the district from which they left. So so that's where it becomes sort of a challenge, Joel, is is trying to convince the parent that they want to to take part in the the learning in a district from which they chose to leave. And that's always the challenge.
And that invitation to the process is done as professional courtesy between districts, but is not otherwise mandated, or is it required that we be brought to the table?
It it's required, Joel, and I'm I'm actually really lucky because the local districts from which our students tend to choice to, I have a really good working relationship, so we're always in constant communication regarding these cases.
Sure. And so let's say that the the family decides ultimately that they do not want to, you know, un-choice back into Gloucester, and Manchester Essex sends them out for services that cost fifty thousand dollars a year. Is it correct to say that in that instance, the chapter seventy money continues to flow with that student to Manchester Essex because they're a Manchester Essex student, and the fifty thousand dollar bill comes back to the Gloucester District?
That is correct, Joel, and we we build they build that through what's called the special needs increment calculation, which is, you know, that's a statewide formula that we use to bill for each and every related service and direct service that a student receives.
So if anything, and again, obviously, this is, you know, I'm oversimplifying, but even if the child, you know, if if the the family was told, listen, we appreciate that you really want services outside of what Gloucester, you know, could provide in-house. But if they were to even just choice back to Gloucester, and then we were to send them to the same, you know, that Manchester was going to, we would at least then begin getting the chapter seventy money because they'd now be a Gloucester student receiving services out of district instead of a Manchester student receiving services out of district. Is that correct?
That's correct, but in my years of experience in this role, that rarely happens where a parent will give up their choice status, Joel.
No, that's fine. Just, you know, it's one of the things where I think it's important, you know, for not just this committee, who I think already understands that, but also for anyone in the public watching to understand kind of the double dip that happens when a student who could be serviced in district for free because we have facilities has, for one reason or another, choiced out to a different district that cannot service them, that then sends them out at cost to us. And there's just, you know, it's um, it's an interesting alignment of how this all, you know, how this all works out. I just wanted to get it out there kind of clearly for everybody who might pay attention. Thank you.
That's fair. Thank you, Joel.
Any other questions? Okay, we can proceed.
Okay. Great. So the next update I'll give you is on enrollment for the year. Let me just get my screen up and running here. There you go. So you see a blue and red chart, correct? Great. So in your packet, you have a table of enrollment data. I'll show it to you graphically here, but can certainly answer questions and can refer to those tables if you like as well. So first off, our enrollment this year, the red you see here is, this is by school on the bottom in the colorful bars. Total enrollment is two thousand seven hundred and sixty-six for enrolled students, and we broke it out by remote and in-person. So four hundred and eighty-four students are in remote K through twelve, pre-K through twelve, sorry. And then in-person, two thousand two hundred and eighty-two. That's a remarkable number, the four hundred and eighty-four. We have essentially created, as you've heard tonight, you know, a virtual school, you know, with our staff for, you know, school essentially half the size of the high school, you know, or if you're talking about elementary, you know, the size of Beaman. So that's pretty remarkable. In terms of last year, there are two thousand eight hundred and forty-six students enrolled, pre-K through twelve. So that's less eighty-one, or you're reduction by eighty-one students from last year to this year. Oops, what happened there? One second. Okay, there you go. This is, this is total students by grade. So again, you can see in the blue, it's in-person, and the red that is by grade. What's noticeable to hear for here on this one is, you know, it's quite, it's remarkably consistent grade by grade in terms of who's remotely learning. And also quite consistent, actually, by who's in-person in terms of the numbers. You know, there aren't there are wilds, there are wild swings here. There also isn't a, you know, any discernible trend upwards or downwards, just looking at one year here. Sometimes you can see in some places, you know, if you have graduating classes, there are high school classes that are, you know, consistently smaller than than early elementary. That is either, you know, either people fleeing, or there may be a trend, you know, of higher enrollment coming. It's hard just from this simple view to see anything that may be noticeable on that. And this is students by on the bottom, students, total students by by school. Here, we're looking at percentage of students, and I can give you the, I can report the numbers if you like. You have them in your packet. By special education, first of all, so you essentially see a quarter of our students are identified as having special needs. Limited English proficient is at eight percent. We'll be giving a report in 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 December, or no, yeah, in December, much about our English language education programs and our students and the changes over the years in enrollment, but also in services provided. Fully half of all our students are identified as high-needs. High-needs is a non-duplication account of any student who is in in one of one or more groups, subgroups, meaning English language learner, special education, or economic disadvantaged. But it's, you know, kids, students are not counted more than once, even if they may be in more than one of those groups. So fifty percent of our children fall into at least one of those groups. Again, English language learner, special education, or economically disadvantaged. In terms of gender, I believe so it's about fifty-fifty, as it almost always is, but a couple, fifty-two percent for men and for males, forty-seven point seven for females, and at this point, no students identifying as non-binary. Remote students, so seventeen point five, that number four hundred and eighty-four students equals seventeen point five percent of our student population is is remote. And then you see in ethnicity here, you know, the the largest percentage of non-white is Hispanic. That's twelve percent, and the other percentages are quite a bit smaller, as you can see on the chart there. Probably averaging, I think, about one or two percent. Moving on, this is our high-needs students by school. And you can see at the high school, it's essentially fifty-fifty. And then varies a bit, sorry, the the high-needs is is red here. So you can see, actually, at O'Malley, higher percentage of high-needs students than non-high-needs students. And again, high-needs means the student fits into at least one category of economically disadvantaged, special education, or English language learner. Then you see there's some variations by our elementary schools. I don't think that's new for folks. I think folks have been aware of that fair bit. You see at two of our schools, being in veterans, that the high-needs population is higher than the non-high-needs, and at the other three elementary schools, it's the opposite. And then this is looking at high-needs specifically. So again, the red is high-needs, and this is by grade level. And those are the numbers in the white normals are the numbers in each case. Again, you know, haven't looked at this thoroughly or deeply, or have not yet looked at this over time, but no obvious trends of by grade, or it's, you can't identify any specific patterns just from one year. But just really want to give you folks an update from where we are based on, this is our October one reporting to to DESI, which we do every year. And this is, you know, what sets us up for, you know, financing in the coming years. Kathy, you have a question?
I do. I think the only number that looks a little odd is the kindergarten number, and is that because we don't that sometimes testing happens during the year and and learning issues may be identified as the year goes on?
Sure. Thank you for pointing it out. Mike Menez and putting this together, the data for me. He and I talked about this. That's that could be part of it, but another significant piece of it really is that the state has not yet gone through the process of classifying students and kindergartens high-needs specifically related to economically disadvantaged. The state now determines that for us, it used to be by sign-ups through, you know, free reduced lunch. Now economic disadvantage is identified through whether through a family's participation in a financial assistance program, a federal or state program. So that process has not happened. So you are right to catch that and point that out. Thanks for reminding me about that discrepancy.
Thank you.
All right. I just want to show you one other piece here, just to look at year-to-year comparisons. Let me stop sharing this and share one other thing. See if I can do this. So this is looking at two year, last year and this year, let me just highlight something so you can see it. So the green column is the change in the grade level from the previous year. So you see in twelfth grade, we're down nine students from nineteen twenty, from one seventy-five to one sixty-six. You know, we're up at the junior, I mean, at the eleventh grade from one fifty to one ninety-three. Okay, but then if we look at, which is helpful to know, but it's hard to, you know, see any, if there's any connection to there. If you look at the orange, that's from here, actually. I'll point that out in a second. The orange is the change from cohort size from the previous year. So for example, here, it's a change from when they were juniors to when they be, I'm sure I'm saying this correctly, when they were juniors to seniors. So last year's junior class, eleventh graders, there was a hundred and fifty. This year, as as in twelfth grade, there are a hundred and sixty-six. So there's been an increase in our size of our of this year's graduating class from from a hundred and fifty last year, a hundred and sixty-six, an increase of sixteen. Similarly, here, from tenth grade moving to eleventh grade, it's down by fifteen. You can see there's some pluses, some minuses. This does add up. The the blue here is sometimes folks look at in terms of getting a gauge of whether a district is growing or not. They look, they compare the size between the graduating class and the incoming kindergarten class. And so our incoming kindergarten class is forty-nine students larger than a graduating class. That doesn't create a trend. It's just something that often one thing folks look at to see if you have over a number of years, you have more kids coming into a system than are leaving. But again, you need to look at that over time. I just want to show folks looking at this two different ways, sort of what the, you know, class, the year-to-year increases are, and then the cohort increases or cohort changes, I should say, are too. So that's all. That's what we have for enrollment. Any following questions?
Any questions? Kathy?
Quick questions. Remind me how homeschooled families are counted in enrollment? Are they counted in our enrollment?
No, they're not counted in our in our enrollment. I was just looking at some data, just because you saw that there's obviously an increase in homeschooling, not surprising, given the the COVID, you know, you know, pandemic. We the DESI, actually, the Mass Association of School Superintendents did a survey of a hundred and twenty districts responding, ninety-two of them, which I believe is seventy-seven percent, have had an increase in homeschooling. So three-quarters at least, I would say, of the districts around the Commonwealth are having an increase in homeschooling. Those districts, I'm not, doesn't, I don't know which districts they were, so it's hard to know what size they were. But the average or the the average of that is twenty-four students per per district increase, which is actually just about what we've had ourselves. But that is, that increase in homeschooling is not just Gloucester, it is statewide.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
And just the last comment here is, I think in the past, I'm not sure, I think you just sort of got the the numbers by school. The total enrollment, I just try to want to give folks a little bigger, little little more detailed picture of of where things are. And as we go forward, we'll look at changes over time, that sort of thing. But just wanted folks to give a little more detailed picture of who our students are.
Samantha?
I'm not sure if there's any way that this could have an impact, but would the pandemic year have an impact on our incoming kindergarten class next year? Would we anticipate it being higher for any reason? I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't really know, honestly. I don't, and I don't, I don't even know who might figure those things out. Because a lot of it comes down to personal choice, you know. Kindergarten isn't required. You can, you can, you know, obviously not not send your kid, your child to kindergarten. It could, I mean, I'm just, I'm just, you know, this is just conjecture here. It could really have a lot to do with how we do this year, honestly. You know, if we do well and keep kids in and and obviously educate them well. You know, if we do well and keep kids in and and obviously educate them well, and people have confidence in our decision making. Maybe that actually has a higher percentage of kids coming than you might expect, especially if a pandemic, if the pandemic continues, but it's hard to tell, I think.
Okay, thanks.
We also, I'm sorry, there was a question from the committee member earlier. In just in their correspondence about choicing in. So I just want to show that, show that to you as well, sorry. I meant to add to that PowerPoint, the PDF, and I thought I had, but. Let me just show it to you quickly, one second. Can you see that large enough? Is that big enough? Okay, great. So on the left, you have receiving students, so you know, students coming into Gloucester. So it's thirty-nine this year, which is, you know, comparable to pre to prior years, you know, up a little bit from last year, the same as twenty eighteen nineteen. On the right-hand side is, you know, sending kids out. So again, actually, a decrease this year. And, yeah, so a decrease of, I know, not insignificant decrease, but we also are not. Yeah, so we're not accepting any more students in to our schools. We've closed that down since the summertime. But just so those are the numbers and those are the comparisons over the last few years. Just to to share that. That's, I promise, that's that's the last I have on on enrollment.
Okay, any other questions? Well, thank you, Patty and Greg and and Ben for that report. And we'll move on to our next order of business, which is subcommittee reports, and we have. Just the building and finance subcommittee of October twenty-first. Kathy, would you like to report out?
As you said, we met on October twenty-first, we went over all the. Financial projection for what we believe this school year looks like. As we know it this minute, who knows what it will look like, you know, in the next week or two or two months. And we still are very. You know, very close on finances, but we are not over, you know, we're not overspending. And we just keep our fingers crossed that this is the way the picture is at the end of the school year, or hopefully a little bit better with. Maybe changes or holding back on some expenses that will help us end in a more positive position. We discussed details around our bus lease. And because our buses are coming due. Adam gave us a good report on on what he's recommending, or at least gonna. Look for out in the market for leases and in considering a little bit of change to hopefully save us some money on our bus lease for the next couple of years, so. So that's being explored. We had two other action items. Do you want me to wait for action?
Yeah, let's let's wait for action then.
Okay. And I think Gary's, you know, chief financial officer report is, you know, really good about all the details that we discussed, though. People I know have received that package.
So just just to elaborate, the the issue about the buses was what? Our buses leased for three years. And but because we didn't use them half of last year. They all have very low mileage, so they're going to explore the possibility of extending the lease. I don't think that's exactly the right term, but essentially put it out to lease used buses for the next couple of years, so. Anything else? We'll move on to our action items. The first item. Is the acceptance of a grant, Gloucester Education Foundation Grant in the amount of twelve thousand four hundred dollars. For the O'Malley Academy to meet the matching funds required by, for the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Grant. Funding was awarded to G E F in support of the O'Malley Academy by a hundred women who care Cape Anne. And I so moved. Second, discussion. Do you know more about the hundred women who care, Kathy? You're muted.
Yes, I do, actually. I I it was started by a handful of women. From across the community, and it's an idea apparently that started. You know, in a totally different state where the concept is that everybody can contribute a little bit of money to different causes. I think in there, in the original case situation, it might have been for baby things for mothers who needed help with diapers. And, you know, strollers and things to get a new mother. You know, ready to, you know, with all the things that she might need if she couldn't necessarily afford it. So this concept was have everybody donate into one particular thing and pick a really good cause. And then that particular cause doesn't get, you know, fifty dollars here and a hundred there, twenty-five here. They get kind of this larger community raised money. And so the amount of money that goes to the one specific cause can actually have a a bigger impact. Because they're getting a bigger infusion at the same amount of time. So the way it works is that the each hundred, there's generally a hundred women or people. I think they dropped the women in their in their title. And everybody donates a hundred dollars per quarter. You don't have to commit to a full year, but it's, everybody is donating a hundred dollars. And I think people really jumped on because it was a nice social thing with a little bit of a half an hour to, you know, talk to people and meet people you didn't know. And then there are three nominated organizations, and they'll pitch a particular program. That might have some kind of game-changing or or big impact for that particular program. Not necessarily broad fundraising appeal for the organization, but we would like to do this because it will help. Help us take care of this. One of them was Wellspring, who does a lot of the mentorship work with our high school, so. And I know they were one of the awardees last year, so um, so this is just a way for different organizations to kind of. Not only hopefully get additional funding, but also for the community of people that show up to actually hear about organizations. They may not be familiar with what their cause are and how they're run and and what they're all about. So the good thing is, everybody there now has exposure to all these other phenomenal nonprofits in the area. And so I think through that, they get new new supporters as well. So it's all about generosity. You're muted.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Melissa?
Yeah, I don't have my hand up.
Okay. All right. All right, seeing none. May we have a roll call vote, Maria?
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Mayor Taken?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
Yes.
And Chairman Pope?
Yes. It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. The next grant is the Gene Hass. Foundation Grant in the amount of ten thousand dollars to Gloucester High School to support scholarships and student competition teams. And I so moved. Okay, is there any discussion or is any information about this grant?
What is a student competition?
Yeah, I was just going to ask that, thank you.
I think it gave examples like robotics competitions and things like that, that the school district might participate in.
Drama. Math league.
Helpful to understand it, because I questioned the same thing.
For students who enroll in engineering, intended enroll in engineering programs. At the postsecond, post-secondary level to help them attend community college or tech centers while they're in high school. So folks who are on a path on engineering, technology. Sort of machining-based work.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, could we have a roll call vote, Maria?
Ms. Prince?
Yeah.
Mayor Taken?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
Yes.
And Chairman Pope?
Yes, it passes unanimously, thank you. We'll move on to the next item. The the approval of nondiscrimination and harassment policy file AC. As recommended by the program subcommittee at its meeting on October fourteenth, two thousand twenty. Joel, would you like to report out on that?
We reported out on this at the last. Wasn't on the agenda for acceptance, which is why it's going forward tonight, but the the real short version to not go through again. Is that we were required to update our policy on this issue, it was a federal requirement, it's part of receiving federal funds, we did that. And then. Greg Barker worked with a specialist who reviewed what we had approved and said, actually, we might want to revisit that. And improve a different set of language that would function better for our district, and that was what was recommended up as file AC.
Okay. So. Trying to remember, I believe this is a first reading. Is it not? Of a new policy.
Jonathan, if you remember, this was one that I had questioned when we did the first reading. And we referred it to personnel.
But we never, we never did a first reading. I think that it was, we we talked about doing it as a first reading and then making amendments, but you objected to that. And so we referred it to program, the program has reviewed it, and they have passed it on with their recommendation. But I think it's still a first reading. So it is the first question would be, do we want to waive the actual reading of it into the record?
I would suggest so, it is very long.
Okay, we we have it in our packet. So we, is that a motion, Joel?
I moved it, we waive the actual reading of the policy into the record.
Okay.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Jonathan, I have my hand up.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I couldn't see it. There you go.
No, that's okay. So I would support this. Policy, however, I just want to put it on record that I'm kind of concerned that our attorney took the position that MASC policy wasn't proper.
The motion is just for a first reading, whether we're going to actually read it into the minutes or not.
Sorry, okay.
You can say that. Okay, this is just about whether we're going to read it. Okay. All right, any further discussion on the reading? Maria, roll call vote?
Ms. Prince?
Yes.
Mayor Taken?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
Yes.
And Chairman Pope?
Yes, okay, so we're not going to read it into the record. That passes unanimously. The. So once again, we, this is still the first reading, which means it'll come back at our next meeting, which will be next week. And we can do a second reading if there's any objections or changes that need to be made, so. Unless I hear a difference, we'll we'll proceed with a motion to accept this as a first reading.
So I moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to speak if I can.
Yes, right ahead.
So it's a first reading, and like I was trying to say earlier, and I apologize for miss speaking. I'm a little concerned that our attorney on on this policy took the position that MASC policy was incorrect. And that this policy is preferred in his perspective. And I'm going to not challenge his opinion, but I'm just concerned. That he would take that position that the other policy was not adequate. Knowing that MASC has their own legal department and that many, many other districts have. Approved their policy as opposed to the policy that we have before us. I mean, I read this, I've read this policy over and over, and I don't see any concern. But I just don't necessarily agree with the author of the policy perspective that the MFC policy was wasn't appropriate. And I don't know what the result of that would be, but I just wanted that put on record.
Okay. Laura?
Um, I just, I just wanted to say in response to that, Melissa, we had a really. Thorough conversation with the attorney and.
I did see it. I wa- I was, I was there at that.
Right, so I just, you know, for the record, I want to say that he, you know, he is an expert on this particular part of law, and he was. You know, he was quite clear on wanting to protect the district from undue burdens and. You know, I I took, I took him at his word. I I thought he was very thorough in his analysis.
Any further discussion?
Joel, did you have your hand up? Sorry.
Yeah, no, just to piggyback on what Laura was saying is that also the attorney was able to. If we adopt this policy as written, he had a lot of collateral backup that would then enable the district to enact this policy. And if a situation comes up in which this policy is triggered, there will be. Documentation that we need, protocols that we need in place, and it all kind of was couched, you need this this policy in place as written. So that the documents and other collateral items you could provide would be, you know, synchronized with it.
Right. Yeah, there's a lot of procedures that go along with this policy, correct?
Yes, there are indeed.
Yes. Okay, is there any further discussion on the first reading of policy AC? Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Prince? Ms. Prince?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I thought you heard me.
Mayor Taken?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favazza?
Yes.
And Chairman Pope?
Yes, it passes unanimously. We'll bring it back for a second reading at our next meeting. At which time we'll have to, if if we, if it passes again, we'll have to. Void policy AC.
ACAB.
ACAB, right, correct. Okay, moving on. Next item is the election of a delegate. To the, in an alternate delegate to the annual MASC Business Meeting on Saturday, November seventh at one P M. As you all received, normally, in a normal year. The MASC and MAS have a joint convention. It's usually in Hyannis. Many of us have attended in the past. It's very informative, a lot of workshops, there's a lot of. Main speakers and 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 there's also a lot of. Associate demonstrations. But there's also the business meetings. This year, because it's remote. We're all invited to attend the sort of a main speaker on Saturday morning, November seventh. But in the afternoon, they're going to have their business meeting, and it's limited to one delegate. And. I I had sent out an email asking if anybody was interested. The only person who responded was Kathy Clancy. So I would, I would like to nominate Kathy Clancy to be Gloucester School Committee's delegate. To the MASC Business Conference on November seventh.
Second, thank you, Kathy.
And is there any discussion? No, I'd just like to thank you too. I mean, it's, the business is is important. There are a number of resolutions that they pass. And and I think they're having some sort of workshop. Beforehand to to explain those resolutions. I'd have to look at the 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 literature to see when it is, but the other thing is you got to send that in tonight. because tonight's the deadline for registering. So that being said, thank you, is, may we have a roll call, any further discussion? May I have a roll call vote, Maria?
Ms. Prince?
Yeah.
Mayor Taken?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favaza?
Yes.
And Chairman Pope?
Yes, it passes unanimously. And is anybody interested in being the alternate delegate? Joel, so I'll make a motion that Joel, we authorize Joel to be the alternate delegate to the MASC Business Conference on November 7th.
Again.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Maria?
Ms. Prince?
Yeah.
Mayor Taken?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favaza?
Yes.
And Chairman Pope?
Yes, thank you, Joel, it passes unanimously. It's in the packet, there's a, in case you don't have it handy, but you, you basically have to, you know, sign up online tonight. Okay, thank you. The next order of business is to authorize the CFO to expend $2,672.33 from the Business Office Supplies Account for the purchase of equipment to facilitate combined remote and in-person school committee meetings, as recommended by the Building and Finance Subcommittee. Kathy, would you like to elaborate on that at all?
So moved.
Okay. Did we have, did we get a second?
Second.
Okay.
So Grant Harris had presented to us at our previous Building and Finance Subcommittee meeting on a couple of options and this was a very reasonable priced option to be able to start having some, some meetings where we could be in person as well as have the public participate on a remote basis. So we feel that it's important that we do get back to a little more normalcy in terms of how we meet and, and we'll give this a try and and Grant seems to think this technology will serve the purpose. It also is movable, so it doesn't have to just be for our meetings, it can be for other uses within the schools, so that's the background.
Yeah, yeah, I think the, it's it's important to understand that it could be, this would have a number of uses, particularly at the high school where they're trying to do in-person and, or more than other places, in-person and remote classes at the same time. So I would suggest that we, this be located at the high school, should it be approved. And then we could have a discussion, once it's in place, we could have a discussion about where we would, might have it set up for school committee meetings, whether it be the library or the, or the the, I don't know where else, you know, the auditorium or a classroom. Okay, so is there any further discussion? Okay, I will say I was a little concerned about getting down to 33 cents. I'm afraid of, you know, I hope if it's 35 cents, they can find the other two cents somewhere. Okay. All right, roll call vote, Maria?
Ms. Prince?
Yeah.
Mayor Taken?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favaza?
Yes.
And Chairman Pope?
Yes, it passes unanimously, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There was an action item that you skipped over, it's appointing Mr. Lummis to the
All right, and there's, and there's still another one, okay. I did, thank you. There's an action item, the approval to appoint Superintendent of Gloucester of, as the Gloucester representative to the North Shore Education Consortium Board for the 2020, 2021 year. This is something that we, we have to renew every year, so I would move that we approve, appoint Superintendent Lummis as the delegate to the representative to the North Shore Education Consortium.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All right, is there any discussion? You don't want to say anything about what a good job you'll do, Ben?
It's either as good a job as I can do or you get someone else, so you guys pick.
Well, it is an associate, it is generally made up of the superintendents. The board is made up of superintendents of the sending communities, so.
No, we actually, we actually had a board meeting this morning, which, and it was very well attended, including by me.
Right, okay. Any further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, Maria?
Ms. Prince?
Yeah.
Mayor Taken?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favaza?
Yes.
And Chairman Pope?
Yes, it passes unanimously, thank you, everyone, and we'll move on to the next item, action item, which is the approval of the FY22 Budget Schedule. And this was recommended out of BNF on 10/21 and so I so move.
Second.
Kathy, would you like to explain it or should we have Gary? There are some changes in it, Gary, maybe you would like to just tell us of the changes from last year.
Okay, this is, this budgeting calendar, very similar to last year with the exception of starting a month earlier. We anticipate FY22 to be a challenging year. We want to start earlier and roll up our sleeves and get to work. So that's the, the most significant change is starting earlier than previous years.
But as it closes out towards the end, it's all pretty much the same, the deadlines are, are similar, okay?
Yes, as we, exactly.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Maria, can we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Prince? Ms. Prince?
I did.
Oh, you had your hand up, did you want to wave in this?
Sorry, I can't wave at you tonight. I just wanted to ask a question to the mayor while, before we vote. Has she heard in any of our discussions, any grants that might be coming out at the beginning of the new year? Is there anything being talked about that will help us?
Are you dreaming?
No, I'm serious.
Well, not clear package, we're all asking the same thing, how is the budget, everything's going? I mean, there, there are different kinds of fundings and grants that are happening for businesses and stuff and, and it was brought up by one of the mayors, I mean, this is a sweet mayor who never says two words and you know what, you thought that I was using language that, you know, you don't want your students to hear, she just, boom, she says, you know, this is ridiculous, I, you know, how am I going to do my school and expect all these things to happen, everything else? And then you put pressure on us that we have to go to school because I guess they were remote and I don't have, I'm going to have to tear the school down and we don't have the mental leash, we don't have that, you know, supply money. And they were all going livid and it was with Secretary Kennealy and he said, you know what? We understand and we're all in the same predicament, we just don't know where the fundings are coming, what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. So right now, it looks like we have to depend on each other to see what we can do. And like I said, every time something comes up, if I know more financial situations are going to come up, I'm going to add an extra link so Ben or Gary can jump on, so we can actually work together because we're all going to have to work together. I mean, this, we don't know what's going to happen and they were saying that, you know, this isn't the peak yet, you know? And we're saying, well, we need to know, I need to know ahead of time, I mean, we, we just don't, we just don't know, so like I said, you know, we did our budget for, and I want to thank you all for, you know, taking that 15% off right away in the beginning because, I mean, we had to. You know, I know it's suffering in some of the teachers and it's, it's difficult, you know, work lesser and, but do more and it's hard. We're all doing that, we're all exhausted and what we're saying is right now, we are lucky than more communities, we really are, some of them haven't been done the 2020 budget. They were waiting, waiting and waiting and we were pretty fortunate, we were very conservative the past five years, we were really conservative. The complaints paid off, I guess the they, I'll say it nicely, the witching and complaining paid off. And so I want to thank you all, but we have to work together and I really think that as the budgets go along and goes forward, I think that Gary with Kenny and, and John Dunn and Jonathan, we're all going to have to sit down and say, what are we doing? And Ben, you know, what are we doing, how do we do, what do we, because we have to figure it out. One more shutdown and we're looking at furloughs, you know what I mean? We just can't sustain a year or seven or eight months of people staying at home remotely when we're not opening and what's going on and they all know that. And some people are already furloughing, the DA's office, you know that, Melissa, they're going to be furloughing, a lot of people are furloughing. And because we just don't know.
For a while.
Yeah, so, you know, it's difficult, no one, everyone hates that F-word and unfortunately, we're looking at okay for this year, but I don't know what's going to happen in January, so that's why I'm glad that you're taking this up early so we can figure out what we need to do. Thank you for asking.
Thank you. So I'll go back to that, is there any further discussion before I call for vote on the, the budget schedule? Okay, Maria, could we have a roll call vote?
Ms. Prince?
Yeah.
Mayor Taken?
Yes, and thank you.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Weason?
Yes.
Kathy Clancy?
Yes.
Mr. Favaza?
Yes.
And Chairman Pope?
Yes, it passes unanimously, thank you very much. There is, I just, before we go into so the next order of business is East Gloucester Veterans Memorial School Building Project Update. All I can say is that the, the building committee's working group has, has put on three informational programs on the, on the past three Tuesday nights. They have been fairly successful, the presentation has been the same pretty much. The questions have been different each time. The first night we had about 20 attendees, the second one we had almost 40. And last night we had 21, was it 21 or 22? But there was some turnover and who they were, so hopefully we got out some good information and answered people's questions about their concerns or just knowledge, but as we all know, the vote is next Tuesday. And we, on the school committee agenda, we will be talking about you know, the result of that vote and, you know, should it be a positive vote? We'll be talking about the next steps and if it's a negative vote, we'll be talking about the next steps. So that's about it, Ben, you want to?
Yeah, I had a couple of things. I would say that the presentation at those forums was scintillating, but maybe, maybe you didn't agree. No, it was, it was well done by the whole, whole crew, especially Principal Fusco and Pascoe helping out quite a bit. And again, that's an attempt to help inform folks and make sure they're getting good information. Another way folks can do that is by going to our district website and just clicking on the, the big picture of the, of the design of the new school. And that leads them to our page, which has been reordered and updated and has everything from, you know, new video to EQs that folks can, can use and to inform themselves about the vote. I do, would I, would like to read, this is just a recent development, a letter from our staff. This is specifically from the Veterans Memorial School staff that they've made public. So I'd like to read that into the record if that's okay, John, Mr. Pope?
Yes, go ahead.
Wait, so we, the staff at Veterans Memorial School, support the Veterans East Gloucester School Project. Our students deserve to be educated in a clean and safe environment. They are entitled to learning in a 21st century school that meets their ever-growing educational needs. Our teaching methods have changed and evolved over the years and the students deserve to have up-to-date resources and access to technology that supports optimal learning. Our schools represent pride in our community, a well-maintained building is something that students and families can take pride in. All of Gloucester students deserve an equitable and healthy learning environment. A safe and efficient building is needed to house a 21st century education that we are expected to provide. We are looking forward to collaborating with our East Gloucester colleagues. Merging our unique talents in academics and social emotional learning will continue to foster growth in our students.
You know, I'm an expert.
So that they can be successful lifelong learners.
Expert.
Then it closes by saying, yes, on question three, support the new school and is signed by I would say upwards of 30 plus, I'm just trying to count here, members of the, of the East Veterans Memorial School staff, sorry, did I just say that, the Veterans Memorial School staff. This follows on a letter from the, from the East Gloucester staff as well, I believe. Also, that earlier in the year, so just really appreciate our teachers standing up for their students and our schools and for the city by sharing that, so thank you. And then the last piece is we will have, we are scheduling a building committee meeting for next Thursday, I believe it is.
Yeah, 4 o'clock.
4 o'clock, again, just as another follow-up. Regardless of the vote, the building committee has work to do and we do hope that it's a favorable vote and that they have a lot of work ahead of them over the next three years.
Melissa?
Jonathan, we've been advertising the vacant positions on the building committee, has there been any public response?
I believe we have, I talked to Enzo today, we have, clearly have one person as an East Gloucester parent. And I'm meeting with the mayor on Monday to go over those, those applications and I'm just going to make sure that they're all in because I've been Principal Fusco has said that they, somebody, a parent from veterans would like to do it and also there's another parent from East Gloucester that I just got to make sure they have their paperwork into the mayor. The, they're appointed by the mayor and I, hopefully we can have a full committee in place by the time we have our meeting next Thursday, week from tomorrow. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other questions about the, the school building project? Okay, I would just like to say, I sent out an email to everybody asking if they were planning on attending the Sawyer Medal ceremony. Joel and Kathy and Melissa have gotten back to me, so I just, a question to, because I have to submit who's going to be there. They want to know, so Laura and Samantha, are you interested in attending?
I need to go back and check on childcare, but I will, I'll write you, Jonathan.
Okay, they need to know, that's all, they, they, they're only allowing two parents, or two, two guests for each recipient. And they're cutting the ceremony, they're taking out the, the book awards and the, the other thing.
Are they, I mean, do they, would they like to limit the school committee members there or are they?
Well, they just asked me to, we're all invited. They, they just want to know, they want to know a name, you know, the amount of, and who's coming.
Just so they can do seating properly, it's making sure seating space properly, that's what it's about, that's why they need no numbers.
I thought we were going to do like a Zoom or a video to say thank you, but you're just going to do the
It's going to be in person.
Okay.
It's going to be in the auditorium, it's going to be spaced out, they're, they're going to do it in person. Okay?
Jonathan, I'm in the same boat as Laura, I'll get back to you tonight.
Okay.
When is it again?
November 18th. So Wednesday night is, is the night that we'll have a school committee before that meeting. So.
I have it down for five, what time you have a school committee at two?
No, it's at 7.
The Sawyer Metal's at 7?
Sawyer Metal's at 7.
Okay, I have it down for 5. So I got to switch that. You can count me in.
Okay, well, you're speaking, so that's good.
Okay, great. Well, now, because I wanted to make sure.
Jonathan, are we starting a school committee meeting earlier? Or is it just going to be less than an hour and give us time to get there?
We, I, we should talk about that. I was going to schedule it for 5. But I haven't quite figured out whether we, we can, the people who are going to be there, whether we, we, you know, maybe we'll have, no, probably not. I'm going to have that equipment in, in place. But if there's some way we could go and actually zoom into our meeting at, from the high school, so that we didn't have to get in a car and drive, drive there. Or whether we wanted to start earlier.
Depends what's on the schedule and what we have and what's happening on the 3rd, et cetera. I would hold it maybe a different day. But also, don't even think of going into the classrooms because they'll be all cleaned. So it's not happening.
Exactly.
Well, we all have iPhones, don't we? We'll be, we're sitting next to each other. What did you say? No.
Yeah. Yeah, we found that doesn't work that well.
Yeah.
Anyways, we'll resolve that. But do you want us, right now, we're scheduling to meet at 5. If, if, you know, this time. So if we have to change the time, if the, if the.
That's why I have 5.
Hopefully, we'll, we'll, we can keep the, the agenda light enough. Excuse me, it's scheduled, we're scheduled for 6. But maybe we move it to 5:30 or 5, depending on what the agenda's going to be. Okay? Anything else before we go into executive session?
Jonathan, I just take this opportunity to thank Samantha Watson for her awesome letter in the paper today.
Yes, go ahead.
I second that.
No, I think.
Great perspective, a great point of view about keeping a school downtown and how important it is.
Okay.
Thank you, Melissa.
Isn't this like the one place we can't thank her?
No, don't, let's not even thank anyone. Please, let's not.
This is the one place you can't thank her.
No, you can't. So stop.
Yeah, we got to be careful. And that's why I read that at the beginning of the meeting.
You're thanking her as someone else. Call her privately.
Oh, I want to thank you too.
No, I don't want to be thanked. Thank you. I'm leaving. Bye. I'm going on to the Zoom. See you later.
Okay, so, well, we need to make a motion to go into executive session. And the motion to meet in executive session pursuant of messages of General Laws 30A, Section 21A, for the following purpose: As an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of a public body, and we will return to open session only to adjourn. And I so move.
Second. Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Maria, roll call. And as I said before, we'll come back into public session only for the purpose of adjourning. So Maria, roll call vote?
Ms. Prince.
Yeah.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Weason.
Yes.
Kathy Clancy.
Yes.
Mr. Favaza.
Yes.
And Chairman Pope.
Yes, so it's unanimous. We'll go into executive session and we'll see you all there.